Thank you, everybody is here. It is 11:34. Good morning, everyone. So I will call this special meeting of the Milpita City Council of October 24, 2025. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comments may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over 60 languages with wordly, accessible via mobile phone, computer, and video displays. So by scanning the QR code located on the title page on the upper right-hand corner, you can access it. So back to today's business, City Clerk Rosetta, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Here.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lam. Councilmember Lian.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm here.
Okay, thank you for that. And now moving to public forum, is there anyone from the public?
Mayor, we still need to take the pledge of allegiance first.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, everybody, let's stand up and rise and, ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you for that. So now we'll go to public forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any item?
Um, Mayor, I have a speaker card for Rob Means. How long would you like to have the comment period?
Two minutes.
We will give you two minutes.
All right. So I actually came down here to talk about ICE and how our police department was going to respond to that, but apparently that's not, that's an off-topic subject and I don't get to talk about it. So in addressing the consequences of Councilmember Chua's actions, you know, if this was a one-off, I'd say, hey, you know, slap her on the hand and send her on her way kind of a thing. But if it's a part of a pattern of behavior over an extended period of time, now we've got a much more serious issue to deal with. And based on comments from Ned Thomas, the previous city manager, and the complaint filed by Steve McHarris, another previous city manager, this looks like it may be a pattern of behavior that requires more than a slap on the wrist. And at that, I'll leave it. Good luck.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, anyone from the floor? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, public forum, rather. So announcement of conflict of interest and campaign contributions. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask the mayor and every other member of the state council whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on today's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
I have none.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Lian.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Thank you, Mayor. I further ask the mayor and every other member of the state council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received in the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on today's agenda, or contributions received from any development project applicant for development projects on today's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
I do not have.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Lian.
None.
Mayor Montano.
None.
Let the record reflect no reported conflicts. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And now it's time for the reading of the city council code of conduct, and we will have Vice Mayor read the conduct.
Right, the Milpita City Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous, words, tone, and body language. Model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue and not the person. Use electronic devices appropriately on the council days. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to the agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this Code of Conduct.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Barbara DiO. So now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make any changes to the agenda?
Mayor.
Councilmember, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Depending on this clarification, I'm going to pause, would be my motion with the current agenda. So we are aware that this is a continuation of the Tuesday council meeting, and from that day all the way to Wednesday, there was an initiation of the censure policy of the council. The procedural question becomes, what supersedes? Would this, it be this agendized meeting today? Or it is being superseded by the council censure that's being initiated? Because I believe both issue, both processes involve the same issues.
The Attorney.
So subject matter does not determine procedural availabilities. The censure policy and invocation of it is one thing that the council is allowed to do. The council has many actions that it can take. So the answer to that question is, is the council can, can do both things, even with the censure, with the censure request out there. The council can't take censure without following through that procedure. And so the initiation of that procedure is what is necessary in following that procedure if the council was to ultimately arrive at the remedy of censure. But any, but the actions short of censure, including those that are detailed in the agenda report, are things the council could initiate today or take actions towards today or discuss today.
So has a censure been initiated?
Yes.
Right, so my motion for today is to adjourn this meeting. Let's give chance to the censure to go forward. There are processes and timelines on that. And I believe if you follow that process, there will be more respect of due process because both sides will be available to provide their own statements, provide their own evidence, and as rightfully as discussed last Tuesday, the ultimate body that would find or make a finding of any violations would be the whole council. So that's my motion.
So the, the motion to adj, it wouldn't be a motion to adjourn. You're saying you moved to have this item removed from the agenda?
Yes, and proceed with the censures since it's been, it's been initiated. It's a redundancy. And as I said, if we discuss this today, it will be less of a discussion than the censure, which provides opportunity for all the parties to provide anything that they would and, and have a more meaningful finding. Yes, so that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second? We have Councilmember Chua.
My second, and I just want to clarify, because there is a censure request, right? And this, and, and we, as the censure, the censure which is attached tonight on this, we have a procedure to follow for the censure request. And, and this, what do you call, this agenda item, it's a duplicity or duplicate of that, but we are, there's a request already. We want to follow the procedure for that because we have a procedure as, as here. My second.
Okay, did you want to make any more comments to Councilmembers Chua's remarks?
Just to make sure the council has the full information is, when these kinds of issues are brought up to the council, the council has many choices they can make. The council could direct training, the council could direct changes in policy, the council could direct action, the council can make statements, the council, the council, any individual council member can invoke the censure policy. There are a variety of options. Having a meeting in order to consider those options, particularly if members do not want to move forward with the censure process, is the opportunity to take lesser remedies that do not have to go through that process if members of the council do not want to take that option in response to those concerns being raised. Members are also allowed to withdraw, amend censure requests if they no longer feel that they are necessary in light of other actions the council takes.
I just want to make sure that we follow the censure procedure because that's how we gain the trust of our residents. And also it's a way to really look at the processes to make sure that, that it's, that if there's anything that we can improve on, it's a way to review it by exercising the whole, the whole censure process. That's where I'm getting from.
I'm about to speak. Right, I understand what the city attorney had said, but if you look at how these two processes were presented, one is presented by staff as a report, and indeed, the council has discretion on that, but I believe it is superseded when a council member initiates an existing censure policy to go forward. So that's another reason why I believe that, you know, it's better to go to that censure unless the moving, the mover of that censure withdraws it than doing this agenda today and we go to the process of censure. We will duplicate that later on when everything is, everything on the timeline and the procedure of the censure policy comes to a hearing with the full council. So that's just that.
Anybody else that wants some more clarification? Because if you can just wrap it up in a nutshell so the public and myself can understand it.
Councilmember Lam, have you had your hand up?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I, whether we, hopefully we have an alternative to do this, to, to, to put this behind us rather than going through the censure process. I believe going through the censure process may not be the best way. And I actually prepare a statement for the public. So if we go through the censure, we might pick up a lot of our time, the city staff time. It might not be good for the city and not good for all of us.
Okay, thank you for those comments. So we have Councilmember Lian.
Thank you, Mayor. Totally agree with Councilmember Lam. I feel that we wasted a lot of community time, staff time, our time, and all the resources are just wasteful. I remember at the last Tuesday meeting, Councilmember Chua and Vice Mayor wanted more information, wanted more proof or emails or text. Staff worked 24 hours straight to produce the reports so that we can have the reports at this meeting. To come this morning to find out that, oh yeah, there's a censure in place, so let's adjourn the meeting. So with that, I will withdraw my censure initiation so that we can continue on with our meeting today.
Okay, so we have some comments from City Attorney. I would like some comments on that process.
Well, that's information to the bringers of the motion. The bringers of the motion are allowed to reconsider in light of that statement by Councilmember Lian. But otherwise, if, if the makers of the motion don't change their motion, then there's still a motion on the table that would have to be addressed.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Right, to give way to the desire of Councilmember Lian, I will withdraw that motion. And if that desire is, is granted, then I'll probably withdraw that motion permanently.
Okay, so.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Lian was verbally stating that she has withdrawn her censure request. That's just a fact at this point. So, and then I heard, Vice Mayor, you're withdrawing your motion. And there's, and then the, because it has been seconded, the question is, any objection from the second?
You.
You, Councilmember Chua.
I'm, explain because I'm not clear. I'm not clear on. So what you're saying is, if the censure is withdrawn and in the motion to adjourn to give way to the censure procedure process, then what's, what's, what's next?
Then if, the, the current question is, is do you have any objection to the Vice Mayor withdrawing his motion?
Oh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, no.
Okay, then the motion is withdrawn. At this juncture, there's no motion pending.
So I think the next one is, as I said, if my, maybe the withdrawal of my motion is contingent to the duplicity, which I believe Councilmember Lian realized, if everybody wants to proceed with this agenda today, I think procedurally, she should withdraw her censure. And that gives way to just one process and, and, and find out what will happen.
The answer is, is she has withdrawn. There, there is no specified process for drawing the request for censure. Councilmember Lian has chosen to do so verbally.
No, Chris, you know, when I made the motion, you said it's a fact. So before that thing can be acted upon, right? I have to withdraw because there's something on the table. I'm just clarifying that now nothing's on the table. She had expressed her desire to withdraw the censure. All I'm saying is now we're ready to proceed with the agenda today.
We're ready to proceed with the agenda.
So in which case, we'd still need approval of the agenda?
Yes, yes, okay. So I needed, if there are no other comments or questions, then we will ask for a motion to approve the agenda, and then I need a second.
Motion.
And I will second it. So it was motioned by Councilmember Lian and seconded by myself, so let's call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua. Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Lian.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye.
Okay. So now we're moving to the agenda items, which is report on violations of the city's code of conduct. This is regarding the council handbook, open government ordinance, and municipal code. So we have staff to report on that.
Thank you. We sent out multiple pieces of information as, pretty much as we were producing the communications as, as late as one this morning, which was a text message. The council asked for additional information to better determine and understand the context of what has occurred. And I want to begin that the context was very deliberately established when the council put together a city attorney work plan. And the work plan was presented to the subcommittee on May 6th, and the work plan is, is so detailed that it even provides for the city manager to be directed to add an item to an agenda, the city manager to be directed to add an item to a closed session agenda. And then it describes, it also provides meeting outcomes of when items go to closed session and open session. So this was, once it was approved by the subcommittee, it became the work plan of how we were going to meet the dates and the milestones toward appointing a city attorney. It was available to the full council, and when amended, it was updated and provided again. So let's go to the matter at hand. You have information now before you. It's your perspective to determine whether it was helpful to understanding the facts of this case with what happened before the Thursday and Friday, which is where the incident happened at hand, as well as what happened after. And so there are some text messages that, as well as email communications that are, that we should go through. Next slide. So I already, I already talked about the work plan, and just to make for a brief presentation, it's important to acknowledge that on August 25th, there was effort of our standard practice to put in place with the correct staff involvement to schedule a meeting for council interviews on August 26th. This began with the city attorney putting together the language, what cites the actual government code for which allow for the council to go into closed session to interview candidates for the city attorney position. This draft agenda was shared with the committee at 9:32 on August 25th. This demonstrates how we prepared to legally and appropriately have a closed session discussion to interview candidates. Next slide. Two hours after the draft was submitted to the subcommittee, the city clerk appropriately noticed the special council meeting and set out all of the, all of the normal standard information for what is required in order to have in closed session those interviews. Next slide. After the agenda was posted and the materials submitted, I then submitted an email to the city council that provided additional details so that no one would be surprised at the hotel where we had the interviews. I had let the council, the full council, know that the city attorney and the city clerk would not be there in order to preserve the confidentiality of the candidates, and that I would fill in for those duties and step out. And in fact, I left the site during the interviews. Next slide. On August 26th, the interviews took place. Next slide. On Wednesday, by review of the emails, you will see that there was information that was shared with the subcommittee about a candidate withdrawing, and then from there it triggers a series of additional emails between the subcommittee about the need to look at the third candidate or availability and begin to start the process of whether there should be an interview or not. Next slide. The candidate provided availability. Next slide. This is when, these are the next details of timeline that are important to, to pay attention to. On Thursday, August 28th, at 6:20 a.m., there was an email that is sent from Councilmember to Michelle that says, please confidentially reach out to the mayor and council members to set up a meeting based on availability. Next slide. At 6:32 a.m. on Thursday, there's another, there's now a text message that comes through. I know you're off today for the confidential meeting. I'm only available Monday and Tuesday. Please refer to the related email. Next slide. Next slide. By Friday, next slide, August 29. I think we missed a slide, slide nine? Oh, no, we did, we covered that slide. Thank you. By Friday, there is an email now at 3:15 from Councilmember saying that any Tuesday is good, anytime Tuesday is good, and providing more details about the preferences for when the interview should have been scheduled. I would say that, given that the staff person was off on Thursday, it would have been more expeditious and per the work plan to reach out to staff who were present in the office to begin that work. Next slide. So after the 3:15 email, somewhere before 4:26, Michelle and Matt have a conversation about her work duties and what she needed to complete. And she casually, casually mentions, somewhere before 4:26, that she is working on directives from Councilmember Chua to schedule the meeting. At 4:26, Matt calls me, and we talk for two minutes about what's, what's, what he knows and the information that he has. I, at 4:20, I'm on the phone with Matt for two minutes. At 4:30, I call the council member and leave a message for her and ask her to give me a call regarding what I had just learned. Next slide. At 4:35, Councilmember sends to Michelle a text message. Only Mayor and four councilmembers, Cheryl and the city attorney candidate. We can have the closed session or third floor conference room or Zoom. Did you get confirmation, date, time from everybody? At 4:46, Matt and Michelle have already had a conversation about the intention to schedule a candidate interview. And Matt has already instructed Michelle of stopping the task and getting the city manager involved. Matt and I have already had a conversation, and Matt is aware that I am trying to get in contact with the city manager, with the city council member to clean this up. Michelle responds by saying, thank you for the clarification. Would you mind checking in with Deanna to discuss this so I can get direction from her? I will need to help, I will need her help figuring this out. Thank you so much. With that in mind, the response is, at 4:50, this is the, this is only for elected officials and no staff involved. And the direction is restated to schedule the meeting. Next slide. At 4:42, I place a call to the mayor, having not heard from the council member about my, my desire to speak with her about this request. At 4:55, she calls, and there's a conversation. If we could go to the next slide. Never mind, let's, let's go to the next slide. There's a conversation, as I stated in my resignation letter, that we talked about me explaining the reason for a special meeting and how it was required to convene the full council for an interview. She did not agree. She stated that it was just an interview. And I advised her that only the city attorney and the city manager could notice that meeting and that Michelle did not know how, nor did she have the authority. And I said that her response was five minutes. I had five minutes to get that work done. I stated that I was only trying to meet the, and properly, I only wanted to, I was only trying to make sure the meeting was properly noticed and in compliance with the state law. She disagreed, again restating issues around it's just an interview. And I clarified the meeting of what the setting a full council requires. It was stated in the work plan. It was practiced, as I demonstrated today, on August 25. And so I, I too was a little surprised as to why we had to talk about complying with the Brown Act at this juncture and, and the state of the recruitment process. Can we go back a couple of slides, please? I would call your attention. At 5:27, 27 minutes or 30 minutes after our conversation, Councilmember Chua sends a text message. I believe the MCM is Mayor Carmen Montano, myself saying, please forget about the meeting. This is an email to Michelle to please forget about the meeting for September 2. We will poll for other dates, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I was, when I received this, I believe I reasonably concluded that I, my explanation to her about why candidate interviews had to be noticed, just like the August 26 interviews had to be noticed. I believe that she realized that we were going down a dangerous path with breaking the state law and that she began to retract her actions. I can't confirm that. That's just my perception, as, as was my perception of the conversation that she and I had. We went, we experienced the conversation. She understood it and walked away with different feelings about it and different conclusions, as did I. You don't have to be right or wrong. It's just both people experiencing a conversation differently. This is how I understood that text message at the time. The next, the next slide, please. We talked about that. Let's go to the next slide. So the next thing that follows is, Michelle sends out an email, having received that text at 5:27, and begins to poll for Wednesday, September 3, September 4, and September 5. I asked Michelle why she sent this. I wasn't on this email, and I just asked her yesterday. Michelle is on the call if there's any questions for her. Her response was, I was scared. I'm scared, I was scared at this point of the directive and the tones of which they were coming. Friday, 29, 5:59 p.m., this is 10 minutes or 12 minutes after Michelle sends this information, Councilmember Chua emails and says, I just realized that I think we need to give 24-hour notice. Wednesday is out then. Kindly check with Deanna to confirm. When I saw this email, I understood it to be that she realized that, and I just wanted to say the definition for the record. The definition of realize is to become fully aware of something as a fact, to understand clearly. This is what she and I talked about, is the need to notice a special meeting and the need for the right people to be involved in that special meeting. That staff absolutely had to be involved, as it was involved on setting and scheduling the August 26 meeting. When I saw this email, I, I understood this as corrective action to retract her information and an acknowledgement that the work that she had done was incomplete and in violation of the codes and the, and the ordinances and the muni codes and all that I've already acknowledged. I think it's important that if your position is that you have done things this way and that it's always been done right, you would more likely than not, and a reasonable person can conclude, you would not send an email where you suddenly realize after having the discussion and accepting a resignation that it did indeed need to be noticed, or you think that it does. Let's go to the next slide. September 1 was a holiday. September 2 was a council meeting. And I want to share that on September 1, Chris and I, the city attorney and I, had a conversation about where we were and the corrective action that needed to be placed and put in place so that we could provide the council, if it so desired, the meeting with the third candidate. Let's go to the next slide. So here, on Wednesday, on September 2, it was, as I mentioned on Tuesday, it was Chris's intention to talk with the Vice Mayor about what had happened and the need to catch him up. The Vice Mayor had been out of town the week before, and we were under the impression that he may not have been up to speed on all that had occurred, including the, my resignation. So this is an email on Wednesday, as we are trying to put corrective action in place, where Councilmember provides her availability, as well as next steps to have me involved and with scheduling the meeting with the entire council to interview the candidate. Next slide. September 4, we are able to get availability of the candidate. And I believe that somewhere on September 3, Vice Mayor and Chris did indeed have that conversation. And by September 4, we have subcommittee confirmation from the Vice Mayor that he and Councilmember Chua did decide to go forward, that's appropriate, and to present to the full council and continue the process. With that information, next slide. We, we looked at the dates. We began to look at what was available, who had responded, and where the balance of dates are to target based on hearing from Vice Mayor, Councilmember Chua, and I believe at the time, Councilmember Lam. So let's go to the next slide. Here, in order to follow the process, I provided full information to the council as required by the handbook of advising the full council of changes of action. And I advise the council that the city attorney subcommittee agreed to recommend to the full council interviewing the candidate if the full council wants to proceed. Now, this is my intention to get a majority of the council, which is required in order to have a council meeting. As I mentioned on Tuesday, one individual council member has no authority to call a council meeting. I said, you can express your willingness to interview the third candidate by responding to Michelle with your availability for a special closed session as early as September 19. I followed by saying, if there is a quorum expressing response to hold a third candidate interview, I will work with the attorney and the clerk to schedule a special closed session. The requirement is to have a majority of the council schedule a meeting. That is your own rule and procedures that are in place. Only the city attorney can schedule that meeting, and the clerk is responsible for putting the agenda out. Next slide, please. I then mention on sending Suzanne, Matt, and Chris that when the agenda is formally noticed, I will send the council confidentially the materials, recognizing that we were waiting for a majority of the council to interview the candidate, and that would trigger release of information. Next. Here we have Suzanne responding that we were working fast. She had already, was in process of posting the meeting and ccing council on scheduling and appropriately noticing the meeting. And then here on September 5, next slide, please. Here is evidence of the meeting being properly scheduled. So the context of this, this eve, series of events is that the city did indeed follow the procedure for scheduling appropriately the August 26 candidate interviews. We did follow the procedures for scheduling the September 5 interviews. However, between Thursday and Friday, there were a series of actions that were not compliant with the code of conduct, the handbook, the open governance ordinance, and the muni code that require how work should be done within the city to ensure that laws are not broken. I want to mention that the city manager's role is to uphold and enforce and take appropriate action to make sure that the city is in compliance with its own muni codes and local laws. I do this on a daily basis. I work through with staff. My work to complete this report, my work to bring this attention to the city council is part of upholding the city's own municipal codes and local laws. I also want to mention, had I not intervened, had Michelle not mentioned to Matt, or had Matt not intervened to get me involved, that we would have been having a very different conversation today. Today's conversation would more likely have been, is what happens when a council meets in violation of the Brown Act and a council member faces prosecution. I think that's really worth noting because we came very close to a meeting being scheduled. And it was through the courage of the city manager's office staff, particularly Michelle and Matt, to take the appropriate action and do what's right and interfere with the process and, and not allow for it to happen. So I just, I know it's been stressful for them, but I do want to thank them publicly for their actions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. And so now, we will call for a public comment. Is anyone from the public or cards?
I have no public speaker cards.
Anyone from the public that would like to make any comments? The floor is open. Now's your opportunity. Okay, so now we will go back to council discussion. But before we do, I just wanted to, you know, I've been thinking about this a lot and wrote a couple of notes. And this is, I mean, it's, it's, part of me is, is, we have a good, we have rules for a reason. We have a, a process. And I know we're here today to address, you know, this matter. And we all have this shared responsibility to uphold our code of conduct. That's why we have a code of conduct, to keep us in check. And so, so as members of this council, you know, we have a duty to maintain the public's trust, the respect, and, you know, boundaries, staff boundaries and model behaviors that our community expects from us. And so, moving forward, let's find out what we want to do. But I, I myself do not want to do a censure. I feel that it was just an honest, honest mistake and, you know, it just, we just need to move forward for the greater good of the city. So let's go back to our council members. We have Councilmember Lam.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank the city staff for their hard work in preparing all the documents for today's special meeting. I spent many hour last night carefully reviewing the material and provided. And based on that information, I have reached my decision on this matter. I have prepared a statement that I would like to share with everyone. While I believe Councilmember Chua has the best interests of our city at heart, her action did create confusion, disrupt normal channels of communication, and undermined the trust and efficient functioning of our city hall governance structure. This is why I respectfully request that Councilmember Chua offer a public apology to the interim city manager, to the city staff who support the council, and to the residents of Milpitas, who relies on us for transparent, inclusive, and disciplined leadership. Rather than simply treating this as a misstep, I believe it offer a meaningful opportunity for growth. We have an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to open communication and use this moment to strengthen our shared expectations regarding meeting, correlation, staff involvement, decision-making process. I also recommend that all city council member participate in a policy training course to further enhance our collective knowledge. It is important that everyone has confidence in the city council's support for our staff and trust that established protocol are being followed, allowing them to perform their work with clarity, consistency, and without unnecessary pressure. To the staff, I believe there's a room for improvement in how this case was handled. We demonstrated to our community that we are open, responsible, public servants who hold ourselves accountable when processes break down, who move on stronger and more unified. I urge all of us, council, staff, and community to focus on moving forward from this incident. Holding on to blame will only get in the way of the important work still ahead of us. I believe Councilmember Chua is dedicated to this city and upholding the value of good governance. Her, her apology would not be a sign of weakness, but rather, a demonstration of leadership, of integrity, accountability, and respect for the role we each play. To my fellow council members and to the city staff, let's take a moment, not as a source of division, but as... but as a value reminder of why clear process and mutual respect are essential. And to the community, please know that your local government is paying attention, learning its missteps, and moving forward with a renewed commitment to transparency, collaboration, and public service. We have a great deal of important work ahead of us. And I would like to put this matter behind us. A cooperative and professional working relationship between city council members and staff is vital as we move forward. Therefore, I move to remove the evaluation of the interim city manager and acting city attorney from future agendas. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. I just wanted to make a follow-up on that. So it's important that we also view this as an opportunity for growth and improvement. There's always room for growth. You know, we're not perfect. And so each one of us, we all can learn from the situation and our interactions with staff, and that we remain within ethical and procedural boundaries. So by addressing this matter today, we can move forward with this as a stronger, more cohesive and governing body. And in summary, although the Brown Act wasn't violated, and I just thank our city manager that, you know, she did her due diligence to, because it would have been a lot worse. So just glad. So I urge my colleagues to support the statement. And I agree to, I hope they go along with you because I think that option to a public apology would move us forward and just, because I know Evelyn's heart is in the right place. She loves this city. She's done so much. And we just all make honest mistakes. So that's, I'm hoping for that. Thank you. Is anyone else that would like to make any comments? We have Councilmember Barbara Dio. I mean Vice Mayor, sorry.
Councilmember Lamb's comments are hard. That I agree. I agree also with Mayor. Right, this thing needs to be ended and move forward. The thing to me is, I am fine moving forward, work together, but on my one vote, for me to arrive on that conclusion, which is a desire prior to knowing what really happened. I hope the way that I expressed my views did not mean that I am defending Councilmember Chua, but I am defending something. I am defending the processes. I am defending the procedural due process that should and will be afforded to anybody. So my decision will be based on, now that there's presentations of more part of the story, is based on the truth. I just don't want to move forward. I just don't want to make a decision about somebody based on what I believe to be deficient on both parts of the story. So this forum now is doing that. And if later on, with appreciation of everything that is said, the position of Councilmember Chua laid to us, and I am convinced, not just by heart, but objectively, that there is a violation or there is some action that needs to be corrected, by all means, I will say that and hold anybody accountable. It's just probably my objective thinking, you know, that that still is holding me off in making that finding. There are things that I see that maybe would explain things. That's, that was why on Tuesday I asked for the totality of what went on. So what I would have wanted to find out, and what I want to find out today is the root of all of these allegations, right? We are right. It was nicely presented by the city manager that started on August 22nd. So we have to understand the actions of Councilmember Chua if those events from August 22nd all the way to September 5, when the report, the city manager said that it's, she had realized as early as August 29 by the text message that she made something that had not been done. That's why the process was continued. But a context is, there is a little bit missing. And if this is expounded today, I think that's the missing piece that I would have my decision to base it on. Number one, right? The October and August 26th closed session, the only present, stop me, Chris, if I go outbound, the only present at that meeting.
You can't talk about anything that occurred during the closed session?
Right. Can I at least manifest who were present on that closed session? Because that's important. As Diana said, there is no presence of the city attorney. There is no presence of the city manager. And what that leaves on that room are the council member and recruiter, right? Right. So I would have had and wished the opportunity to review the closed session recording. Although I cannot discuss it, I did request that, Chris, because I believe that there is a very pertinent discussion during that time that would help clear up how and why Councilmember Chua proceeded as she proceeded. But let's skip that for now, and I hope to hear that later on. So as part of the presentation, there was a information right after or before, correct me, Diana, if I'm wrong, that there was a withdrawal of a certain candidate, and that was communicated to the whole council. So what that mean is there's less choices left on what we have done on August 26th closed session. And again, stop me if of this something, there was originally supposed to be a number of candidates, right? I'm trying to be careful, Chris. Candidates until we were so limited with a candidate. So I believe that's, that's, that's where things may have been misinterpreted or miscommunicated. So there are still communications between the subcommittee and the recruiter in between the August 26 and where the presentation today had started on August 27. And I think that is crucial to learn the truth so that we can figure out what is the intention so that we could decide whether that intention is something that violated conduct, violated procedures, that violated policies. And that part of the situation is, one candidate withdrew, and I believe that there was, I mean, there were supposed to be three candidate.
That, right.
Oh, sorry. Few candidates, not, I mean, few candidates that we have to consider. So I believe that is the motivation of Councilmember Chua in initiating something. I'll define that something for now, right? So there was, there were communications between the recruiter and the subcommittee, which is, consists of Councilmember Chua, myself, and the recruiter, frantically, if I can use that adjective, trying to see if there is a possibility that we can consider a third interview. And I will let Councilmember Chua speak to that part, but I believe there was some sort of double effort to find out dates and dates for a possible meeting, right? That, that's what I believe had happened. So while the subcommittee is looking and asking for availabilities on the thread that's not presented with the recruiter, once there was some clarity on a possible future schedule with a possible third interview, that.
Count Vice Mayor.
Right. Then the email came about, the email that was presented, the email of Councilmember Chua to, and if you can put that on, to Michelle. And if it, it is apparent that on that email, please refer to the thread. So the thread, it became public. It's part of the attachment. The thread is about the conversations the subcommittee, me, and Councilmember Chua has been discussing. When there was clarity of a possible future date, that is when the communication happened.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor. Are you almost, I mean, it is, we need other, other people have their hands raised.
Right. But I believe most of us spoke of their thoughts already, and I, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll cut the chase. So when it was realized, as presented, right? That August 29. And I commend the city manager for specifying this certain, I mean, the specific time within which these things happen, right? So if we look at, because to my understanding, I'll preempt a finding, right? To my understanding, what Councilmember Chua had done is to see and seek for polling of dates for availability. That is the preliminary thing. If you look at the, the thread of emails from recruiter, all the way to when the, the email to the office specialist was. And this is very apparent after the conversation of a city manager with Councilmember Chua at around 4:40 as, as presented.
Let's have the city manager respond to that.
Mayor, if I may, just on a procedural issue before we move forward, I want to just confirm for the record what I think was very apparent in Councilmember Lamb's statement. You said you were reading a statement, and then at the end of it, you said a motion. You weren't actually making the motion at that time. You're signaling your intent to make that motion at some later time, correct?
No, I, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you did make a motion.
Okay. Then if you're intent, so let's clarify that. If you're bringing the motion at that time, then we have to address the motion right now. Is, is that your intent?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a, then there is a motion to cancel the direction for agendization that came from Tuesday night. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the motion is to remove the evaluation of interim city manager and acting city attorney from future agendas.
So this is our second on that.
Comment?
Was there, was there a second on that?
It hadn't been seconded. I think, I suspect because others like me might have thought that it wasn't making a motion, but.
Okay, so is there a second?
I have a comment.
That way we can, let's take the vote first, and then we'll go back.
There needs to be a second to take a vote.
All right, I second that.
Okay, let's call for the.
Comment?
I do have a comment. I do have a comment behind my mo, my second. I think Vice Mayor is going around and around trying to. I'm going to use the word cover up again. And you may disagree with me when I say cover up. Because what we are looking for is that trail, that trace of violating our policy, our Code of Conduct. Luckily, the city manager stopped it in time. We have Mayor Montano agreed that yes, there was a honest mistake. Although it is a mistake, she does not believe that it should be a censure. Agreeing to that mistake. And all these emails said it all. So I don't think we should cover up. We should not send a message to our community members or our, or the public. It makes us look very bad. And on Tuesday's meeting, when you said, let's have the city attorney and the city manager in for evaluation. It didn't happen before the meeting. It didn't happen way after the meeting. It's right there. To me, I mean, it seemed motivated by a desire of retribution. That's an act of retaliation. And I appreciate that Councilmember Lamb remove it or motion to remove it. I think we should be very careful. And on Tuesday, you said, we are a laughingstock. I believe that's the right word. Stop that. Don't make a fool out of ourselves in the community and our neighboring cities. I came to this hoping that we are adults. We are here to lead. As leaders, we lead by examples. And I don't see that. And if it needed to have training sessions, city manager, please do that. Maybe all of us need training on how to lead. I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. And City Manager, you had a couple of comments.
I'll refer to the council member.
Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
I can't think of an appropriate word, right? But I'm disheartened, you know, to question my integrity. That's a question to the people that voted for me. My intention is not to cover up. The way you make your decision, each council member is on you. Whether you use this, you use your heart, or you use the air, my way of deciding things is objective and on the facts. So to tag me as covering up for a fellow council member is very incorrect. My intention ever since is not to prejudge anybody, not just any council member, but anybody with an allegation. Review the tape. The first thing that I said on Tuesday is, I question, why is there a violation already? I'm giving the process time. When I asked the city attorney, the city attorney confirmed there's only a way to say that there is a violation, and that is through the censure policy. Will you fault me for trying to find out the truth? Will it be ways of resources of this city to know the truth? I'd rather do that, know the truth, than let's do, let's just move on. It's a waste of time. What will be more, what will be a situation more to prove the integrity of the council? Let's just get over this. It's costing too much. Or let's get over this. Let's find out the truth so that we can move on, and this issue will no longer be coming back and by. and this issue will no longer be coming back and bite us back? That's just my intention. Whoever, even if it's another council member, I would do the same. As I said, this is not a personal trying to defend Councilmember Chua. I'm trying to defend the exact reasons why we are elected as representative of the people is to tell the truth. Why? Who would question a discretion of a council member when that council member, myself, is not convinced just yet? I'm not saying I will not be, I'm also saying that I will be. Not yet, I'm asking for time and more information. And if that's a fault on somebody's eyes, I respect that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We need to give other people a chance. I'm going to be honest with you. This is why we're here, we've already got all the facts. I don't want to regurgitate this.
If I may, just, I want to make sure current debate is on the motion that's pending.
Right.
Okay, so let's call for the vote.
Hold on. And the reason for that asking of an evaluation is because when I asked last Tuesday, if you want to find out the side of the process of the city staff, I asked, "What is the mechanism to that?"
Let's call for the vote, because if there's a motion on the floor, then we can discuss.
No, I'm explaining why I asked for an evaluation, and that is the reason why I asked for evaluation.
Let's call for the vote. Let's call for the vote. Can you restate the motion, Chris?
You can have Councilmember Lamb restate it, or I can. But if Councilmember Lamb is prepared to, he can.
Councilmember Lamb.
What's the motion?
He's going to repeat it right now.
Okay. The motion is to remove the evaluation of the interim city manager and acting city attorney from future agendas. Well, the motion on Tuesday is to agendalize.
Yeah, that, no matter, I want to interject, go ahead. Finish. Yeah, I just want to make a comment, because that was, I'm going to be honest with you, that was disrespectful. I felt that, you know, for you to say that during the time, it was kind of felt a little like retaliation. I just felt that it was not the right time and the right place, with all due respect. So I do agree with Councilmember Lamb, we need to remove that. So there is no appearance of a retaliation. So we need to call for the vote, and then we can discuss.
Modification to the motion.
Go ahead.
Because the motion is to remove the evaluation of the city manager and city attorney for on future agenda. Can you just remove it from the, from when it was requested? Because you don't know what's going to happen in the future. Do you see what I'm saying? Okay, so there is an addendum.
Yeah, it's not indefinite.
Yeah, you can't be indefinite. Yeah, is that good? It's the second, okay? Who's the second?
Okay. So it was motioned by Councilmember Lamb, seconded by Councilmember Lynn. So it's called for the vote.
Vice Mayor, Barbara DiO.
I disagree.
Councilmember Chua?
Nay.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leeann?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay.
So for clarification of the motion, Councilmember Lamb, just want to make sure there is no evaluations to be scheduled for October 28? That's correct, right? Okay, so does that anticipate a closed session for November 4 on the topic?
On evaluation?
Yes, because we're in process of producing an agenda packet with future agendas, and I just want to make sure we capture that right. Literally after this meeting, we're going into agenda production. We'll take those items off of the October 28?
Yeah, that's my intention.
But since you left it indefinitely, are these-
No, no. Effem Chua already amended that.
Here's an amendment.
So November 4, we put them on?
Only-
Or are you speaking to this topic, that this topic is not subject for evaluation?
I'm speaking for removing the Tuesday motions.
Okay.
I want to remove that.
Okay.
Okay.
City manager.
We have Councilmember Lynn.
City manager asked if this would be placed in closed session on November 4. The answer is?
No.
Okay, did you get that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to get these agendas out later today after the meeting. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so now that we have that out of the way.
I was going to answer-
Go ahead, City Manager.
Yeah, so I do appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments. And I do think that the emails that we released do provide information about what happened. And for clarification, on August 26, it is true that inside the room interviewing were the council members, the recruiter, and the candidates. What needs to be recognized is that as part of the preparation for that meeting, it was noticed, it was legally convened according to the requirements that are outlined on your own agenda. It was recorded, and it was closed appropriately. And so the "no staff involvement" leaves absent how those requirements are going to be fulfilled. I do want to bring in to your attention, there is a series of emails about that week, about me the day after recognizing that I had left the site while the candidates were interviewing. I just, I left, I sent an email the next day asking the recruiter, just trying to catch up where you left off with the council. Is there any reason to schedule a closed session based on your update? Do you anticipate having information for this subcommittee? If it's next week, we have time. I need to get the packet out on Friday, much like I just said, and I'd like to understand. She says, "Let's schedule a closed session two weeks out." I told her I will hold time on the closed session agenda. And then I learn from her on Wednesday at 4 o'clock that there is the withdrawal, and that she just notified the subcommittee of a Wednesday evening withdrawal. And my response was, you know, "What happened? I don't know." And then I said, "Does the full council know they should?" And then on Thursday, that's Thursday, me telling that the information was received about the withdrawal on Wednesday. On Thursday at 2:18, I'm asking the recruiter, "I don't have any information, I just know that there has been a withdrawal. Does the full council know they should?" That's because a handbook requires when there is a change from council direction, which this is a change, to advise the full council. And her comment was, "I notified the subcommittee, and Councilmember Chua asked to set up time to interview." That's Thursday. I do not know at this time that actions have already been taken to work directly with Michelle and to remove staff involvement from the process. And then I said, "I just asked the sub-" Oh, this is the recruiter. "I just asked the subcommittee if the full council is aware of the candidate withdrawal. The candidate interview is confidential at this point." And then my response is, "I think that this is a governance issue that the full council should know. Once the subcommittee recommended the candidate to the full council, it became a full council engagement, especially since they have already sat down with the candidate. It seems that they should know and make an informed decision, if any. Make your own judgment call, but in my professional opinion, the subcommittee does not have the authority to withhold information from the full council since the full council has interviewed both candidates. I think the full council would wonder why we were not told, why they were not told at the time that the other council members were told. Just trying to manage council dynamics and ensure that everyone has the same information, which is good governance." She says she's going to talk with Councilmember Chua on Friday morning, and that Councilmember Chua will be telling the rest of the council. I say to her, "Excellent. I was going to send you the council procedures for keeping the council informed of subcommittee's work. This is my effort to uphold the subcommittee duties, to uphold the rules, and make sure that the council is appropriately advised." And at no time, I really wish that, rather than working through the recruiter, I would have had the opportunity to work through with the council member, because a lot of this could have been avoided. And there was no reason why the information came on Wednesday, and the council has to wait till Friday to know. And I think that really caused for issues because I didn't know about what was happening with Michelle and that activity as well I was trying to get to the recruiter, that whatever you have that formally acknowledged that the person withdrew needs to immediately get to the council. And I didn't have that information and was trying to just keep good governance in place.
Those comments, and I think we need to, like as I mentioned, so I urge my colleagues that option two, that we move with option two, because that's what I had requested on Tuesday. I think that's the best course of action and the training. And I love how you want to have us, because it's true, we're not, you know, there's a lot in governance that we don't know, and I think we should do that, so. Anyone? Okay, and if you could not, if you could please limit it, because it is-
After you elope.
Okay. Give other folks a chance, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So on the presentation, and I will accept that if it is, right? The attachment to five, I think that's when the city manager said that this is the realization finally of Councilmember Chua that something was not followed, right? That is, and you specified the time on August 29, 5:27 PM. And that is the first one that, you know, that you believe that, you know, your effort, which we think, right, that she is correcting herself. And after that, then those communications that led to the finally, the interview of a certain candidate in the future. So my only thing, and as I said, right, sometimes factual things leads to explanations of why things had happened. So if that is the claim, I, you know, I'm still bewildered with regards to your email resignation August 29, which was written like a few minutes after you realized and continued with the process of properly noticing a possible meeting. But a few minutes before that, after that, you still wrote the letter. And to me, this letter speaks what your thought process is at the time. So you said that Michelle called stating that she got a directive from Chua asking for the above request of holding a room for council only, calling the council, and confirming the candidate. So the issue to my mind now is, you know, you have acknowledged prior to sending this email that everything is corrected. So now I would like to know why it was written this way. Secondly, I would want to know when was the issue brought to the attention of the district attorney? If you tell me that, and I will ask for an answer today, if you tell me that the issue was brought to the district attorney after your realization on August 29 that Councilmember Chua is trying to correct her actions, which one did you believe? Is it that she realized her actions? Or you still believe that she did violate the Brown Act? So that's the hanging question I have. It's all about timing and understanding what had happened so that we look at the intentions, and that's where we decide.
Yes, so-
Thank you. City manager, will you respond?
So the call with Councilmember Chua took place from 4:55 to 4:58. I was driving at that time. And so I got home, I parked my car, and I went inside my house, and I wrote this email, and I documented what had happened. Now, I've maintained that the conversation was tense. I experienced it as tense. And that it revolved around having to work to explain why a council member cannot call a special meeting, call a closed session, and the requirements needed to interview a candidate. And she disagreed, and she said it was just an interview. I advised that she does not, that you can't do that without the city attorney and the city manager noticing the meeting. I talked with her about being a Brown Act violation, and that that's a state law that has serious consequences. There was disagreement, there was a lot of back and forth, the tone, right? I was told I have five minutes to get the agenda published. I again reiterated and explained what was happening, and then she said, "You have four minutes", right? I didn't include that detail. And that's when I knew that it was going to be difficult to have that get through to her. I had had conversations, so I put in here about polling and noticing and all the other, but I had already had conversations with Matt two times. And I had had, at one point, the second call, Michelle was on the phone. And Michelle was confirming that there's a request for a meeting. It's in the emails to confidentially schedule a meeting. It's restated in the text messages to schedule a meeting with no staff involvement. Reasonable people, Matt, Michelle, and I, we concluded that she is trying to have a council, I'm sorry, a candidate interview without staff involved, and to schedule it as early as September 1, a holiday, when no staff is at City Hall. That's where we were working from, and then September 2 was her preference before the council meeting. You can't write an email of this in three minutes. So I finished my driving, I parked my car, I went to my house, and Matt confirmed I was driving, he knew when he was calling me, and I documented this. I did not see Councilmember Chua's email come through at 5:27, and I wrote this and I sent it. Because when, I strongly feel, and I think a lot of professionals would feel, that when you're having to have a disagreement with a council member about complying with state law, it is very difficult to see how you can be successful and productive in your duties. And I found myself on that Friday afternoon very conflicted in that someone who I had worked with well, we've had, we were having some tense incidences, and now on Friday, I was trying to prevent a violation of the Brown Act. I didn't want that on my hands, I didn't want that to be an outcome, and I said, "I need to remove myself and get out of this situation." And that's why I submitted my resignation. I hadn't seen this, I hadn't seen this, this text message, because I was busy writing my letter. Yeah, I saw it after, but what's important to note is your corrective action or your realization does not take away from the fact that you have already violated the council code of conduct, the council handbook, the open government ordinance, and the municipal code. Those violations are documented on Thursday and Friday. And it's like with any broken law, you can't then say, "Let me correct it", and then that erases those violations. The violations occurred, we had a heated discussion that resulted in me wanting to get out of the situation. And I think she reflected correctly, and she began to send messages of her desire to correct. And we completely professionally worked together and got the right meeting scheduled appropriately. And I really did appreciate that the next week.
So, okay, so appreciate that you averted this thing, right? And at some point-
I think it's Michelle and Matt.
Right, it is, well, thank you. So when was it reported to the district attorney?
So as I mentioned on Tuesday- So as I mentioned on Tuesday, as I mentioned today and on Tuesday, Chris and I talked about the corrective path going forward. And there was some research that I had done and I had talked with Chris about, is the intention to break the law a crime? Or does it require breaking the law that's the crime? And there were, through different codes and through different publications, there was one set of documents that said, it's the intention to break the law and schedule a secret meeting. It was referred to as a secret meeting, right? And the, and so that's what we began to discuss. There is clear, there was a clear intention to have a meeting with no staff involvement.
And Chris was involved in determining whether it's an intention or the action is something criminal?
We, well, Chris and Jared and I were in the room on Tuesday. And we discussed Tuesday, September 2nd.
Oh, September 2nd.
Yes. Because Monday was a holiday, right? And so we didn't know the answer to the question. It's not for us to decide. Eventually, it's a state law. And appropriately, it needs to be submitted to the district attorney. Because if it is, if the threshold is an intent to schedule a secret meeting, then that is required to be submitted to the district attorney. If it's the occurrence of the meeting, then that's, then the district attorney can make the finding. And the district attorney found, I don't remember the day, maybe it was Wednesday or Thursday, the fourth. Okay, so it's Thursday. By Thursday, the district attorney said that it was averted. But they did confirm that there, it appears that there was an attempt. They use that term. There was an attempt to schedule a meeting. And that had it happened, they would have considered prosecution, and everything would have had to be nullified. And so we were confused. You know, you can intend to break a law, right? Or you can break a law. And we didn't want to make those decisions. It's not for us to make.
That's true. So, you know, the accountability of that is what I'm trying to ask, right? It can, we cannot be confused. You know, we have an able department for the city attorney. We have an able investigative skills of our law enforcement. And we have a very talented and knowledgeable city manager. It's, so September 2nd, you already knew that you had averted what you believed to be a violation of the Brown Act on August 29. And why is it still? You know, I talked to Chris about this. You can talk to him, right? There is no attempt on a Brown Act violation. Ever you did it or not. It's not, crime is not about just having the intent. There should be an overt act. And I believe investigation, a well-seasoned investigator would know that before a question is posted or submitted to the district attorney. So how can I believe now that, you know, as you said, you had averted it as early as August 29, when council member Chua realized it? And still, you already know that there was no violation on August 29. There was still a presumably a meeting between staff to determine if there was a criminal violation. And we proceeded on asking the district attorney if there was a criminal aspect of what has been done. Haven't we tried to ponder deeper? Just an allegation like that would put the city out of light. It could have been more responsible.
City manager, can you respond to that?
I think we were responsible. The, our law enforcement arm of the city organization worked with the district attorney to see, to interpret the state laws and make the decision. That's appropriate, that's a standard practice. I think what's also important is, and I called Jared up because I'm going to have to put this on him to help quickly, is there are a lot of prosecuted crimes for attempted. You could think of attempted robbery, attempted entry, attempted murder, right? And so there's things that, in the law, where the attempt to do something can be prosecuted. I'll let you name more and expand if needed. But the attempt itself can be persecuted. And I think I just named some of them as severe.
With all due respect, I talked to city attorney about that. There is no attempt of a Brown Act. I don't know why that was not provided when it was forwarded to the DA.
We didn't, just go ahead.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council Jeter Hernandez, serving as your police chief. I think I might be able to provide some clarity, listening to the conversation. I don't know that it's clear to council that there was no police report written. It was an informal inquiry to the DA's office based on the information that we had at that time. And the information that I had at the time is that it appeared that a council member had attempted to schedule a meeting that was not going to be publicly noticed in violation of the Brown Act. I learned about this on Tuesday. I spoke to the district attorney's office on Wednesday. And I spoke to, at that time, it's the assistant district attorney. I was then referred to another person in their integrity unit that deals or is more familiar with these. What I was told is that an attempted Brown Act violation, they would not pursue. Not that it's not illegal, but they would not pursue it because the way that the statute is written, it's very challenging and difficult. So I think that it's been alluded that an attempt is not illegal. That wasn't my conversation with the district attorney. The conversation is it's not something that they would pursue. I had told them our circumstances, that the meeting did not occur, and the chain of events. And that's what led to an email response from the district attorney that said, had this meeting not been prevented, then yes, it would have been a violation of the Brown Act, and it would have been subject to prosecution. We did not know that August 29th. No, it was.
Sorry, Vice Mayor. You need to be recognized by the chair and have your microphone.
I think it's a matter of clarity. If you're saying what staff knew, then I don't know. I learned about it on Tuesday. I didn't learn about it on the 29th. I think Tuesday was the second, I think it was. And the district attorney in my conversation, the first one occurred on Wednesday, which I believe was the third. And the second one was on Thursday, which was the fourth. So when you say they knew about it, the district attorney did not know about it. Nothing was formally submitted to them. I was the only person in the police department involved in that. No detectives were assigned. It was really just an inquiry as we were reading the section, trying to identify some clarity.
I just, yeah, I just want to clarify. I did not know of that email because I was busy writing my resignation and documenting what had occurred. At 5:27, when it was sent, I wasn't focused on text messages.
That was 8:29. Understandably, while you write that email, you have not seen it, but you've seen it the following day. You took positive action towards the realization of a schedule of a special meeting. My question is, despite everybody's knowledge, and I want to hear from Chris, everybody's knowledge that it was averted. Thank you very much. You know, you saved the city. Why was it still necessary to provide information to the district attorney and generate a public record now, you know, putting the city online?
Vice Mayor, I did not read it. I, once I resigned at 5:30, I closed my laptop. And the only reason I opened my laptop was to issue the biweekly the next morning, which I did. And I did not read text messages. It was a three-day weekend, and I was going to really rest up from a three-day, from the week before. And I did not check in until Monday or Tuesday.
It's a very important situation.
Yes, but you saying that I read it the next day, that's not true. That is not a true statement.
So you haven't read it prior to the conversation with Chief Jared and city attorney?
I don't remember whether I had or had not. Thank you for that.
We really, we really need to wrap this up because we don't want to be here all day. I have other meetings to attend. Council member Chua.
I just, no.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, chief. First of all, I want to address the, there was no secret meeting. I didn't use the secret meeting word. It's confidential. The reason why I asked for a, it's confidential because we had leakage during the time when you were in the process of being hired by the city. And it's, and you can see it on the emails that I emphasize that this is a confidential, it's not a confidential meeting. It's confidential to people that shouldn't be involved, you know? And I just want to say about that, that on Michelle's, on the admin's letter, and she said, this made me feel, on her two-page letter, this made me feel somewhat manipulated by being asked to do something that I have never done before. And I didn't know how to do, but was asked to keep all this confidential from my bosses. I did not say that. As mentioned on section two below, I have worked with Michelle when she was admin specialist. I think she's been here two years, two years. But I have worked with her in the process of the search for an interim city manager. And she knows exactly what it was. And we didn't have any problem at that time. She is very good. She keeps, she keeps it, nobody knew except when we published it. I mean, when we talked about it on the closed session, the leak came from the internal people. So saying that she didn't know, she knew how to do these things. And I was relying on that because I didn't do anything at that point. All I said, these are the candidates. Please keep it confidential, and I leave it up to you. And that's exactly how I talked to Michelle to do the polling. And that was, I was expecting the same thing. That's why I was kind of like, why am I involved on this? So that's one. I just want to address what the council member Lam. I want, I want to move forward as well because this is, as you can tell, it's not good for the city. It's not good for everybody. It's not good for me and my family because, and because, because it's stressful. And, but I, like I said, I want to be able to look at the process, what happened. And this is what we're trying to do. You talk about the delay. The delay is, like you said, you too, you didn't look at your text messages. Me too. When I received the delay, I mean, that one of the, one of the candidates withdrew, I wasn't able to look at my emails at two days, right? Because I was, I had COVID. I was high fever and all that thing. So that was the delay. But as soon as I realized, I sent it out. The thing about September 29 conversation, it was just, Mayor Montana called me and said, you have to talk to Deanna. I said, okay. At this time, I was still, you know, I was sick with COVID. So I called Deanna, and she explained to me. I said, oh, we can't do this. And I realized, oh, yeah, that's right. Because I've done training on Brown Act violation, even when I was on the planning commission. And I've been on the planning commission for many years. And I've been trained on this Brown Act violation thing. And even with the, with, with being on the city council. So, but sometimes you need somebody to realize, to make you realize, oh, yeah, that's right, we can't do that. And you did that, and staff did that, and I appreciate it. And we appreciate it very much. Because we avert, we averted something that shouldn't happen. But if you think about it, if it was even put on the agenda, you, you have to review it, and then Chris have to review it. You will see it's not supposed to be done. You see, you see what I'm saying? I mean, so the other one is the intent. There was no intent. I can say that with heartfelt. There was no intent to have a secret meeting. There was no intent at all from my side. The one about the one-minute phone call on September, August 29, 4:55. I did not disagree with you. The minute you explained it to me, that's why we have a very short conversation. The minute you explained it to me, I said, thank you very much, Deanna, for the clarification. Just go ahead and move, proceed the best way you think is, that is proper procedure to follow. And I thank you. And I called the mayor, and I said, mayor, we need to agendize and notify, notify the, make a proper notification. And mayor Naisen said, oh, yeah, we, oh, yeah, that's true. So that was that on that part. I just, as part of the, as being project, I mean, city manager, it's, I look for a city manager and city attorney as advisors. And you did your part to advise, and I did follow. I did not argue with you. I just realized that, oh, yeah, that's right. And, and that was that for the August 29 meeting. The following one, the one thing, I followed your advice, city attorney, and said, maybe we should have a meeting to hash things out with city manager. And I said, oh, good idea, let's do it. And we did it on February 4, Thursday? I mean, September 4, Thursday.
I believe it was.
September.
It was later than that. I don't remember the exact date. No, it was definitely later than September 4. It wasn't the week. September 4 was the date of the interviews.
No, no. September 26. 26 is the first one, and September 5 is the second one.
Right, I don't believe that we met, the three of us met. We didn't meet before the interview, the other interview.
I think we did. September 4. Can you check, please? But anyway, so I said, okay, let's meet, and hash this out. I want to have this, you know, I work with Deanna. And, you know, I wanted her to be in the city of Melperas because I know she's talented and she knows her stuff. But at that meeting, you presented me with a bunch of documents saying that the, you, these are the violations, ten items, two pages, and several other backup taxes, and the statement from the district attorney. So I asked you, I said, why wasn't I involved? Why didn't you get my input before you went to the city, I mean, to district attorney? And you said, oh, it, I can't remember exactly the legal issue you told me, but you justified why you did that. And, and I, and I said, is it September 4, Deanna?
September 11.
11?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So we're wrong. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, so September 11. So so before so when you told me that you did that and and Chief said that you met on September 1?
September 2.
2?
Yeah.
September 2. And you showed me the 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 statement from the from the DA. And you wrote some notes. And also city city manager was was saying that it the the violation as well, I mean, so the two of you. So my thing is it just, I was not informed. Why? My question is, why was I not asked of my side of the story? You don't have to answer that. You can answer later. So another one that bothered me is the violation when when it was it was agendized that on September 21. The title of the report already said, Report on Violation of City Code of Conduct, Council Handbook, Open Government Ordinance, and Municipal Code. It's already a violation before I was even asked of my input. I it took like because you knew from the DA's office that it was not a violation. Why? Why? I'm concerned that who made the decision to to put this as a violation already? As you stated before, that it's only the council that can decide whether it's a violation or not. That's a concern to me. The thing is, if I look for you to be able to, city attorney, to be able to determine that, whether it's a violation or not. But on the other hand, we have a standing organization law office that we can reach out to, that you've been reaching out to for advice. Before you even went to the DA, why didn't you reach out to our consultant and say, hey, can you give me some advice? Is this a violation or not? We could have, we could have prevented this disruption to the city if 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 they have, they probably know and tell you, oh, it's not. You know, we could have averted this whole thing. That's what I was looking for. But it didn't happen. You went ahead and proceeded with the with reaching out to the DA's office. I'm also like concerned like when it's been brought to my attention that the document that were presented to me where Deanna mentioned this on the September, not 4th, but 11th meeting, that he told us, the two of us, that she presented the document to the rest of the council. This, some of the document that you guys gave me. You remember saying, oh, I I showed this to to the rest of the council. That's even before I knew before I knew
Verify what this is?
No, this one. You told me that the the council, no, the one that says the penalties and all that. This one. You said that you gave this to 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 the council. You shared this with the council.
The I believe what you're referring to is a document online that is a primer about the Brown Act. And it talks about the what the consequences of a Brown Act. So I I shared, the mayor called me. And that was shared with the the consequences. She called me after receiving my resignation, as well as council member Lam, right, about the consequences. I did not share that with the full council. It's a document. It's a public document. It's available online if you if you Google Brown Act violations. And so everyone has information. Since they asked me about it, I shared it with them about how severe what the severity of what could have happened.
What could have happened? But the thing is, it was presented to them before I knew about it. Do you see what I'm? It's it's
They called me before you called me. So they wanted to learn.
I don't know the timeframe. It's but I knew that this was shared before me because I only saw it on the meeting, but you already said you shared it with other people.
That's being transparent and just sharing who has the information. They had called me before and wanted to talk about what happens when about this situation. I explained to them the severity of what happens when the Brown Act is broken. And it's the same information. It's publicly available. There's
I understand.
There's no secret information.
Yes, that means you already spoke with them about the alleged violation. That's a concern to me. It's also it's also another concern that when when we were meeting on the 11, the city attorney was taking notes. And and then on August 8, I got this email that says, I have an attorney-client memorandum. And I even thought about it. And I said, I wonder who is the client? And it turned out to be me. But the thing is, when it was sent, it was sent to everybody. Even before I I had my input on the memo. I didn't see the memo until until it was sent to everybody. The Attorney Client Memorandum. That's a concern because I didn't have my input. I didn't I was not able to review whether what you wrote was was what I understand it to be. So that's another omitted or relevant or suppressed information. I was not given a chance. The the agenda on the 21st, I was not aware that this was going to be this alleged violation was going to be on the agenda. I got a email, I think, from the city manager. I was in an event Thursday night and mayor mentioned to me, oh, the there is an item for you. I said, oh, okay. That would be good because it would give me a chance to to say my piece, my side of the story. But I didn't realize it's going to be, I thought it was going to be at the closed session. I can explain myself, right? But the Friday, the next Friday, when I was over at Manufacturing Day, city manager emailed around 10, 10:30-ish or 20-ish and said, give me a call. But I didn't see the email because I was, we were almost all day at the Manufacturing Day. And she said to call her before 3:30 because she wasn't feeling well. And she's over at, you know, the hospital. So so but I didn't see the email until Sunday, which is too late. The the packet has already gone out because we have a deadline of 5 o'clock. And because it has gone out, it has gone to the different media social media venues, newspaper and and television stations. They, what what happened is it already disparaged me because it says the violation. Discredited me, just disparage. So my reputation has been prematurely tainted. The, you know, your reputation has been damaged because of that without my input. And that's very big to me because I've been in public service for a long time, serving on different commissions and serving as a council member. And for over 30 years or something. That's a long time. And it just pains me that we could have stopped this, you know, when when Deanna was not able to read this text on the polling thing. It could it could have been stopped. Which when I, you know, when I said, just do whatever you need to do, right? You had a proper way of doing this. And you could have stopped it to Chris if you had reached out to the consultant. I see what I'm saying is is it, I I'm not, I'm not saying that the Brown Act is is minor. I'm not saying that. But is it worth it? I didn't embezzle any money. I didn't have child abuse. That one thing, you can just go straight to the DA. This is a, I don't want to put a light on this one, but I just wonder about the judgment. Because the disruptiveness of it, is it worth it? I mean, I'm I'm not, I'm not saying is it, but what I'm saying is there's got to be some kind of degree, you know, on when, because when you said, city attorney, because because you had wrote the memo, you have to write, you have to make it public. So you know, you know what you were doing. You know this is going to be out. And what I'm saying is is it worth? Is it, I don't want to say it's worth. I mean, you know, you have to gauge this disruptiveness. Yeah, wait, let me finish first, please. I waited for everybody. So I I want to move forward. But on the other hand, I I want to be sure that I still feel that we have to look at our procedure. Have some guidelines. When do we do these things? When when the when executive team needs to go to to the DA's office? We need guidelines on those. We need the specific steps. We have, we have the censure policy and we have the censure steps. Is there something there that we can improve on so this doesn't happen again? That's one thing I really want out of this, even though I've been damaged reputation-wise. Out of this, I still want that firm, strong procedure that will help the future council members, executive team to follow and be successful. I I don't want this to happen to anybody again. That's all for now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, city manager.
Yeah, I just, I want to I want to thank you for your comments. I think that a lot of the comments were informative. I appreciate that you acknowledged that we averted something that should not have happened. I I guess from your comments, the issue around judgment, I too have questioned that. And I wonder why you did not involve the city attorney and the city manager at the appropriate time to schedule the meeting and elected instead to go to Michelle on her day off. And I I think had had procedure been followed and had the standard process of working to schedule according to our work plan, when to direct me to put stuff on closed session or in public session, that would have avoided all of that. And so, you know, I've I've wondered too, why why would you go to an office specialist and ask for the meeting with no staff involvement and miss the opportunity to work as we had been since May? That, I think, would have taken away all of the other actions that took place. I've been at this for 30 years and I've worked on a lot of different type of investigations, both at the state level and at the federal level. And so I feel really uncomfortable when a local govern governing body begins to want to establish policies for how the city staff work with the district attorney. And I just have to say that because I was had a great conversation with Lam about, you know, having worked directly with the FBI and how when you work with the FBI, how it changes how a city manager has to work. I've worked on Bay Area crime circuits. I've had to deal with working through the police department several times on different issues. And I just, I, with all due respect to this board, I just really feel that is not an appropriate role. I think our law enforcement arm of this organization clearly understands how to work and coordinate. And it somewhat feels inhibiting because what if, you could just look at LA, you can look at San Francisco where members of the board are violating crimes and are in prison at this point. And if you begin to restrict how our actions can be put in place, then you are restricting how how you are governed and whether you're lawful or not. And I I just feel that's a dangerous route to go. But I do want to just take it back that I really appreciate your comments of acknowledging we averted. I think there's still some existing confusion about the role of the DA and state law versus governing bodies here and the local law that you enforce. And I do think there was a lapse of judgment to not work with the city attorney or the city manager on your part to schedule the meeting for closed session for a candidate interview prior to the activities that took place on August 28 and 29. Your actions could have avoided all of this. And I think that's just worth noting for the public record. And I I do thank you for your comments.
Yes, you may.
Like I said before, earlier this year, when we were going through the process of search for the interim city manager, mayor and I were on the subcommittee. We were the one that that did the search. And once we find out that we have certain amount of candidates, I just gave the the names to Michelle and she went from that. Michelle works for the executive, the office of the executive
City Manager.
City manager executive team. So I figure, oh, she must you, you, she works under you. So it's obviously she reports to you. I didn't have to be involved, to be honest. Like I was not involved during the time on the interim interim city manager search. Do you, that's how I felt. But when you called me and you said, hey, you know, it, we need to agendize and all that. So I said, okay, go ahead, you know, thank you. There is, there is that thing, the understanding. And when you say that to restrict the the access to DA, I don't mean that. What I meant is to be specific on what procedure to follow when certain circumstances arise arises. when certain circumstances arise, arises. I, I don't, that's the reason why we need to review. What are the steps that we need to put in? Make sure we get, don't get into trouble. I'm not saying restricted. I look for you guys to advise us. That's, that's all I can say for that one.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, you know, with Councilmember Lamb's recommendation of us having some type of a workshop, that can also be included in there as well. You know, to better understand. I know we all have commitments and I appreciate everybody taking the time off to have this special meeting. I want to get some recommendations from any of you. What is the desire of the council? You know, the bottom line is that we, there were mistakes made and we just, I feel that we need to put closure to this and try to do the best for the city. Because we're here as representatives and we have, we do, we're, we're supposed to hold higher standards. And we make mistakes, honest mistakes. And that's why we need a strong city manager to help us and staff. So I want to know what direction does a city manager or have any comments to make? Any recommendations to kind of guide us?
If I may, just in terms of hearing the discussion, obviously the council gets to choose what any member might want to make as a motion. What I'd heard Councilmember Lamb suggesting was to adopt his statement to direct the same manager to bring back training on these issues and to request Councilmember Chua to issue an apology. And then what I heard Councilmember Chua perhaps suggesting as another thing that the council may want to consider is the same manager bringing back recommendations for policy and procedure improvements in light, in light of, in light of this discussion.
I, I think, my only comment was about the training is I really liked Councilmember Lamb's idea. And I, whatever happens by, by this council, I would recommend that training be included.
Okay, what I expected is we make some finding. I'll, I'll make mine, I don't know, to address of the council. And this is where I'm going to base my decision on what action we would take, whether the suggestion of Councilmember Lamb would be appropriate or, or something else. You know, what I don't find first is that I do not believe that, uh, let me go to what I find first. I find that the aversion of a possible violation of the Brown Act probably did happen. But that is through habits and past, uh, uh, normal processes with regards to interaction of the council, the council and the executive level is something that made the confusion, right? It is true that what I do not believe is there is a segregation of the office specialists from the office of the city manager. Everybody knows that when we need something, we either direct it through an office specialist, which is standard to have, should and would be communicated to the city manager, right? For example, scheduling, you know, I always communicate or my office always communicate to Michelle and it goes to the city manager's office and it comes down, it comes back as, as that. So I don't find that, you know, the separation of that office, of that particular, uh, I, particular position to the city manager. What I don't find credible is considering that there was an aversion already, right? And as early as August twenty nine. That is where the function of the city manager is, right? As someone who guides the council, she averted that. She knew or should have known that it was averted and should have ceased at the time or at least pull more heads to see if there is a need to move forward from that aversion. I believe that it went beyond what it should have been. The go, going to the district attorney, agendizing this as a conclusive violation. My findings and belief is it went beyond. That I don't believe that there were confusions. You know, we are not talking about some individuals or entities that a confusion amidst the circumstances would create overt actions like bringing it to the district attorney and bringing it to the council on an, an open and conclusive statement of violations. I believe that Councilmember Chua did make overt actions. But I do not believe that these actions were intended to violate the Brown Act or violate conduct. That's my finding for the reason that as, as she tested, as she said, you know, this was a standard of the way we communicate. She communicates with that certain position towards the city manager's office. And she had that conversation. However, that conversation found out, there was, I believe that there was an acceptance at that point that there was no intention. And she submitted to the expertise of the city manager for guidance as well as the city attorney. I believe that there was a deficiency in investigating, if there was, in the part of the collaboration of the city attorney's office and, and the city manager. It should have been done more responsibly and should have been based on neutral facts and understanding of the circumstances. As I felt that the report was on one side, based merely, and this was acknowledged on the Tuesday meeting, but based merely on one's opinion. The congruence of one's opinion does not necessarily mean there was a violation. What should have been done is the proper procedure. As I said, you know, there is chaos when there's no procedure. And that's, that's, there were reasons why we do have in place processes to address this kind of situation.
That's correct, and that's what happened. We need to, we've been here for almost three hours. And I think the city manager has a couple of comments and we need, we need to put some closure to this. And someone needs to make a motion and decide. And as I mentioned Tuesday, I think the best course of action is number two. But it's up to the council. But before that, let's have the city manager make some comments.
I, I wasn't going to make the comment earlier after Councilmember Chua's comment. But I did, because I, I know that staff are watching and I know particularly that Michelle is, is watching and tuned in. I just, I wanted to say that I believe that Michelle made reasonable conclusions after being told three times, this is only for elected officials and no staff involved. And I believe that she uses excellent judgment. And I believe that her instructions were, and how she followed those instructions from Councilmember Chua were intended to not have staff involved, meaning the attorney or the city manager's office. And her judgment has always been spot on. And I think this is a reasonable person after being told three times would make that same conclusion. And that she, she happened to mention it to Matt and then from there, the issues took place.
Thank you for that. So now we have a council member, Leanne.
Thank you, Mayor. So Vice Mayor, we are coming closer to understanding of this whole situation. At least now you realize that, yes, the process was stopped by city manager in time before it violated the policy. I, I'm a little concerned because Councilmember Chua mentioned that she have served close to thirty years. Is that right? Chair different commissions, serving on different commissions. And she got to know how to run the meeting, how to post a meeting. These meetings has to be notified and, and put a notice in public. I guess we are here to see if the mistakes were made and if you're going to admit to that mistake and move on. The problem we had here was it continued. We discussed left and right. Each one of us had different comments of, no, it was not violated, yes, it was violated. Any actions taken? I don't know. But Vice Mayor is getting closer to the findings.
So there's, so I've just been informed that Michelle wants to speak. But does that, so a question to the city attorney, if we let her speak, does the public get to speak? I'm not sure.
Michelle is a member of staff.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and still employed.
So we'll go ahead and let her speak. Michelle?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to kind of add to what Vice Mayor Barbadeo had said. I did, I do schedule meetings for you guys. It has been my pleasure to work for the council and have the opportunity to hold the position that I had. I did try to direct Councilmember Chua to Deanna because going back a little bit further, and I'm sorry, when Councilmember Chua had referenced the letter that I wrote in terms of, I don't schedule those kinds of meetings. I don't schedule council meetings. I do schedule meetings for you guys, but when everyone's all together, that doesn't involve me. And when I did try to, again, direct Councilmember Chua to reach out to Deanna to try to get this taken care of, because again, I don't schedule the council meetings. We, we see the text message exchange. So I just want to point that out that I, I did try to follow procedure. You guys do reach out to me for meetings. But trying to make sure that that meeting was followed appropriately in terms of scheduling, I did, again, direct her to Deanna. So I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. And we have one more from, yeah, we, we need to, we need to, we're going to have to start, wrap it up. Because as I mentioned, we, we often, the council needs to make a decision what direction to go. And your input is very important, Councilmember. So you're, you're, you have the floor.
I just, I just want to, I mean, I've worked with Michelle for a while and I found her to be really a great employee and everybody loves her and me too. So, so Michelle is an excellent addition to the organization. I just want to let you know, Michelle, about that. And I still do think highly of you and, and appreciate all the work that you've done for us. And there's one thing that I need to point out, which I forgot to say. After the, the August twenty sixth meeting, there was a, a consensus, a to-do list, because a to-do list that were given direction to the consultant. And one of those is to proceed with the, with interviewing the candidate that was unable to make it and, and proceed with reaching out to find out if there are some more candidates out there. But that was the whole council already. That's the direction from the whole council. That's what I'm trying to say. So you can't say that there was no direction from the council. That's, that's what, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So is there a, what is the worship of the council? And we had, we had a comment from Councilmember Leanne. Councilmember Lamb, do you have anything else to say?
The comments from all the council members. I want to echo what I said earlier. I believe Councilmember Chua made honest mistakes. If she apologized to the staff and to the puppet, then we just move on. And to our staff, I believe this matter can handle better. There are room to improve. We just need to reflect on that.
Okay, thank you. I, I am concerned about the, I've, for me, I'm looking out for the best interest of the city. We have, we don't have a city attorney. We, we don't know if you're going to stay or not. And morale, I feel, is low. We have a bargaining unit that we're dealing with. There's just so much on the plate. And I'm just, I want to resolve this and I want to, sometimes we just have to sacrifice for the greater good. And I just hoping that we can take that step. And as you mentioned, you're, you want to do this, was that a motion or I'm not sure what? So can you clarify?
And, and Councilmember Lamb, if you need a form of motion, I can provide it.
Yes, I would like Councilmember Chua to apologize for the missteps and put this behind us and move on. There are lots of things we need to do, lots of work we need to handle in the near futures. And we just don't want this to drag on. We, we need this to, um, to end today and put all this behind us.
Okay, I will second that.
I don't know if we had a clear motion there. Councilmember Lamb, may I follow up with you to get a clear motion? In part because of your prior statements. So the first question I have is, do you want to have the statement that you read out as part of your motion be adopted by the council?
Yes.
Okay. You also had said that you want the same manager to bring back training for the council on these issues. Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
You said that you want to request Councilmember Chua to make an apology. Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
And then Councilmember Chua had suggested, and based upon your comments, I, it sounds like you might be interested in for the same manager to bring back policy and procedure improvements based upon this incident. Is that part of your motion?
Can you repeat the last?
Do you want the city manager to bring back policy and procedure, recommendations for policy and procedure improvements based upon this incident?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that you want to be an element of your motion?
That's it.
So I, if, so that's, as I understand it, those four things are the statement of your motion. Is that right? Okay.
Can I second that? So let's call for the vote. Vice Mayor Barbadeo?
I don't believe that that's a resolution, so I abstain.
Councilmember Chua?
I abstain.
Councilmember Lamb?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Mike?
Nay.
Mayor Montano?
And I, I am a yes.
The motion passes two to one.
Okay. Okay, everyone, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.